How are you, sir? Good to see you.
Me too.
Eat mine.
I don't have a water pile.
Got mine in the bag.
Hey, I have an extra one right here.
Oh. I like this slide.
Going to call the meeting to order? Welcome everybody to our February 24th, 2020 study session. Do you see please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Decorsy.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Excused.
Councilmember Giraj.
Here.
Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Mano.
Here.
Thank you. Any announcements, reports, or presentations? Okay, let's move right into our agenda items. So our agenda items for council discussion night, first one is our, let's see, we have, David, you're up, okay, so this is part of yours, here, okay, very good. Okay, so the first on the agenda is our innovation, technology update, so welcome everybody.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that on the agenda item that HR and IT are splitting the 30 minutes.
Okay, good.
And IT graciously allowed us to go first, so the Human Resources team is here to talk to you about the functions of our departments, and so, I know I've met all of you, Candace Martinson, Director of HR and Risk Management, but I want to introduce you to the rest of the management team of HR.
I'm Melissa Menage, I am the HR Manager.
My name is Erin Barber, I'm the Assistant Director of Human Resources, and Candace told me that I was supposed to limit the amount of time that I talk and share tonight because I could dominate conversation.
So what you will find about Erin is he's always trying to keep the mood light, so that would be him. So just moving through our presentation real quickly, so one of the privileges that we get as Human Resources is to help influence the direction of the city and our people, and so one of those components, core foundation of Human Resources is development of core values. The city has several core values, but from the employment relationship standpoint, these are our four core values. And then we have specific job competencies that are related to whatever your role is in the organization, so every employee has core values, and then as you work your way up through management responsibility, that you're given additional competencies that you are expected to meet and evaluated on annually. So as you've been introduced to all of our departments over these council presentations over the last few months, you're aware of all of our departments, but Human Resources has the opportunity and privilege to interact with and support all of these departments. So Team Auburn is what we've branded our onboarding process with our employees in the city, and so we have 170-plus job titles in the city, we have 435 full-time employees, and almost half of our staff have tenure of 10-plus years of service. So our department structure, we have eight staff in HR, so myself, Melissa, and Erin, we make up the management team, and then we also have an HR assistant, two coordinators, and two analysts that help us support all of the 435 full-time employees and 200-plus temporary employees that we bring on seasonally, or for different programs. So one thing that we're pretty excited about this year is that we're doing a lot of streamlining and automating of processes, and we're also doing a lot of cross-training within the department. So our two coordinators, we're working towards cross-training in our management staff with those coordinators, and then with this Assistant Director and his analysts, working on cross-training those analysts as well. So HR and Risk Management, we have a lot of programs that we oversee, I know that is kind of a small graphic, but I have your hand out in front of you, so there's a lot of tasks that roll up into these big sections, labor, classification compensation, employment programs, benefits administration, and risk management. So we're going to have our managers and our management team explain to you a little bit more of what those programs look like.
All right, so as the HR Manager, I am responsible for our recruitment processes. So we've included some stats from 2019, so we, like Candace mentioned, we are really working on trying to improve our processes, really make them streamlined, and recently have implemented blind screening, so that we are really focusing more on our inclusive Auburn, which Candace will talk about a little bit, but really trying to make sure that we are just doing our best to make sure we're getting the most qualified candidates. We're doing a lot of proactive recruiting, and really trying to target people who are in those market, in kind of those niche markets, where we can recruit rather than just hope they see our job posting. So we're working a lot about, working on that a lot in 2020. We also have, in addition to our full-time employees, we do have a lot of temporary and seasonal hiring that goes on, that has recently started, primarily in our Parks Department to support all of our camps and our recreation programs, and then our seasonal maintenance workers, those are our two biggest kind of temporary hiring seasons that we go through. In addition to that, we also process a lot of volunteers, so on top of the volunteers that are regular, and through our different programs, we also bring on new volunteers every year. So just last year, we brought on additionally 200 volunteers for coaching. In our senior center, there's so many programs that run on our volunteers, and we process them just like we do any other employees, to make sure their background checked and reference checked and all of that, to protect the city as well as our programs and our participants. Great. So in addition, I'm also responsible for civil service hiring, so we have a chief civil service examiner, who runs that process, Terry Mendoza, and we not only hire for entry-level and lateral police officers, we also do our promotional testing in-house for our sergeants and our commander positions. The overall process is quite some, it's a lot more detailed and takes quite some time, so those candidates, Terry is really kind of dedicated to that process, so that we can ensure we're getting our candidates through as quickly as we can, because once they get hired, then they go to the academy, so they're not actually on the street for quite some time. We have, again, been trying to work on our recruiting in that aspect as well, we're having people go to public safety testing when they're doing the tests, to kind of promote Auburn and Team Auburn, and get people to join Team APD, which is really exciting. And we currently have seven openings, Chief actually, I believe, made an offer this afternoon, so hopefully that is going down by one, but Terry and Chief and his management team have been working really closely and making sure that we're trying to get those candidates through as quickly as we can. We have virtual and in-person hiring seminars, our next one is actually going to be on March 19th, where we invite people to come in who are interested in applying for a police officer position and learn about the process, and how can we help you be successful, whether that means you're going to end up in Auburn ultimately, or you're going to go to another agency, a lot of the agencies, you know, we're fighting for the same candidate. It's really hard to hire police officers right now, so whether they come here or go to a neighboring agency, we want them to be prepared and qualified for a police position. Right, so in addition, I'm also, I kind of oversee our risk management function, so basically that is, we try to do our best to make sure we're protecting the city as far as contracts go, employee safety, workers' compensation, and we will bring in safety training and consultants when we need it, to make sure that we're serving our employees the best that we can. In addition to that side of risk management, we also have the liability and insurance side, so I'm also kind of over that as well. We are a member of Washington City's Insurance Authority, which is a risk pool. So for our property values throughout the city, we have over $178 million of properties that the city ensures through WCIA, so if there were any kind of crazy issue or anything like that, that has happened to any of our properties, we use WCIA as our insurance provider for that, as well as our auto, we have over $14.5 million of automobiles in our fleet, and then for liability claims, which is the claims for damages that will come in from citizens from time to time, that is, we have $20 million in liability coverage for that. So those types of claims include like pothole claims, or sewer claims, or claims for damages against the police department, those are typically more severe, we do see more pothole claims than any other claim. The next step in that process, of course, is if someone chooses to file a lawsuit, we help process through that with our city clerk and our legal department, and we are kind of the liaison between WCIA and our legal department. And then the last part of my kind of purview is our training and development piece, so we recently started bi-annual management retreats, this upcoming one, I believe it's in April, it's going to be about generation training, and basically making sure that we are training our employees to really manage how we are working with different generations in the workplace, which we're really excited about, because it's kind of all over the place. We have our Parks team, you know, we have our tenured employees who have been here for a really long time, and so we want to make sure that we are serving all of our employees the best we can. We're also implementing a new learning management system called LEARN this spring, early summer, and we're really excited to get a lot of our training online, so we can track and be really, hold people accountable, and just really ensure that our records are up to date and kept up appropriately.
I think that might be the gist, was I five minutes? I might have gone a little long, sorry. I tried to talk fast.
So my name's Erin Barber, and I'm the Assistant Director, and in my purview, first and foremost, we do the collective bargaining agreements, and we'll negotiate those. As some of you may know, that we had, what, three, four, that expired at the end of 2019, and we came to agreement in our collective bargaining agreements, and with our collective bargaining agreements, we take employee groups and negotiate the working conditions, the wages, and safety and equipment for those individual employee groups. We have four currently in the Police Department, one is our Police Support, the other is our Officer Guild, our Sergeant Association, and then our Commander, I think we call that Association, and then we also have a Teamsters collective bargaining agreement, which would make up the maintenance staff, and that spans three different departments in Parks, Public Works, and Administration, for more of our custodial and building maintenance positions. So with collective bargaining, we would begin negotiations in, let's say, June, and try and have that negotiation done before the contract expires. We would assist in drafting memorandums of understanding, if there's pieces of the collective bargaining agreement that we haven't specifically detailed, or if there's questions about that, we would assist in any grievances, if either party thinks that we violated the collective bargaining agreement. We have had to go to mediation with different groups, where we have a mediator come in, and we work through different issues that might come up in collective bargaining, generally that's related to wages, and so we talk about that. And then we would serve as a representative for PERC, which is the Public Employee Relations Commission, if there's equal employment discrepancy, and they have issues with that, or if we need to represent the city for arbitration. On the next slide, you can see that 50% of our employee group of the 435 employees is non-represented or unaffiliated, and that about 50% is in the different bargaining units, and that's pretty unique for a city of our size, that a lot of other cities tend to have more affiliated positions, and I think it's a testimony to our mayor and to our management staff that treats employees fairly, and there isn't always a necessity for bargaining units. But you can see that in Teamsters, I think it makes up about 97 employees, our Police Commission would be approximately 107 employees, our Commanders, is there six Commanders?
Five.
Five Commanders, and then Non-Commissioned or Police Support, which would make up Parking Enforcement, Animal Control, Police Public Record Specialists, Evidence Techs, that we have 18 of those employees, and then our Sergeants are about 13 Sergeants. So we have 13, or?
13.
Yeah. So then the other side of what we work on is the employee relations, so this includes drafting and developing policies, and these policies, I think we have, I don't know, we have maybe 80 different policies, and this would span from the FMLA, so Family Medical Leave, it would span what our vacation policy is, our sick leave policy, our discrimination policies, et cetera, and records retention policies, and all the policies that we have internal and outside the city. And then we'd also maintain the flex schedules at the city of Auburn, we allow employees to work different schedules, whether that's four days a week at 10 hours a day, or nine days, 80 hours, to allow somebody to have a flex Friday off, or flex Monday off, and we maintain that to make sure that there's no FLSA violations, which is the Fair Labor Standards Act, to make sure that we're paying minimum wages, and that people aren't working over 40 hours a week. We would, obviously, we're in charge of conducting any investigations, and hopefully that's at a minimum, but the reality is, is that sometimes we need to look into complaints both inside the city and outside the city, and so we would conduct our own investigations and assist in any appropriate discipline, and then if discipline is rendered, then sometimes the unions get involved, and we have to represent the city for grievances or arbitration, or whatever that might be. And then we also provide the coaching and training for management and staff about workload levels, and how to best organize if there are personnel issues. Okay? And then next, we do class and compensation, so we perform wage and benefit survey analysis, we do this with contract negotiations, so we'll go out to our neighboring jurisdictions and say, what do similar-sized cities pay for police officers, for example, or for IT personnel, or engineers, or whatever, and then we will determine the appropriate pay scale for that, and so that's something that I maintain, we also do the same thing for benefits administration, what kind of similarities do we have for our medical plans, and how much premium is somebody paying, and what are their out-of-pocket maxes, and so we would administer and create, and also compare with other jurisdictions, to make sure that we're being competitive. And then, obviously, we revise those pay scales, we also serve as representatives for the Independent Salary Commission, which is a separate commission that determines the pay for councilmembers and the mayor, and so we would serve as the city representative to get any information that that commission needs in order to make a determination and a recommendation on that salary, and then we also maintain the city's classification system, so we write job descriptions, which job descriptions help to determine the level of compensation, but also assist us in the personnel side, when we're making determination on discipline or doing performance evaluations. And then we assist in reclassification, sometimes positions grow and morph, and they change, and so we would assist in reclassifications. In some times, we need to reorganize different departments to be more efficient, and we would assist in reorganizing, and then we would update the org charts as well. And then I've already talked about Fair Labor Standards Acts, it says there that we determine whether a position is overtime exempt versus non-exempt, so that means that we basically just determine whether a position meets the Fair Labor Standards Act, different determination whether a position would be eligible for Auburn. Okay? And that's it for me.
So some two items that I wanted to cover that impact the council, that I wanted you to be aware of coming up in 2020, so we are also negotiate the public defense contract, the King County District Court contract, and the conflict attorney contracts, and so the King County District Court inter-local agreement is up this year, and so I believe it's tentatively scheduled for April to bring an update for all of you to review on that contract. It is a significant contract for the city, and so we are working with our legal team to review the legal components of the inter-local agreement, and then HR's job is to break down the way in which the court is contributing the cost associated with managing our court to us, and so we're just getting into negotiating all of that costing right now, so we've been partnering with the legal department on that. And then Work Crew Administration is a piece of that, so we do manage the Work Crew Administration for hours that are assigned through our court. And then finally, a new initiative that we have embarked on in 2019 and 2020 is our Inclusive Auburn Initiative, and so our directors have spent six, eight-hour training sessions in, from 2019 into 2020, in working with our consultant that we have assigned to this initiative, and his name is Bernardo Ruiz, and at some point this year, you'll get to meet him, and he'll give an update on the progress that we've made with the financial investment that council has approved. But the goal, or the mission, that the directors have developed for the Inclusive Auburn Initiative is to remove the barriers for each and every person to pursue doing what they enjoy in safe places with the people they love in a community of learners. So there was council action that we're building off of this new resolution, so there was a resolution identified in 2017, and that's Resolution 5284. The new resolution for the Inclusive Auburn Initiative is 5427, and that was approved in July 2019. So the funding for that investment was $141,000 that we've carried over into 2020 to begin that work. And so how this will be impacting the council is, I'm sure that you have been in communication with Antoinette Manthe about your 20-minute interviews with the Principal Consultant, Bernardo Ruiz, so he's wanting to get your feedback and introduce himself and introduce the initiative, and then on top of that, there will be 40 hours of council training that you will go through, similar to the directors that will be working on, and Antoinette will be working on scheduling with you in your already busy schedules, so I know that's going to be a lot of work on your part to fit that into all of the objectives that you have, but I think you will find, as the mayor can attest to you and the directors, that that training has been very valuable for us, and even some of the directors have moved on, embarking on initiatives in our own department, and so as Melissa was alluding to, one of the blind screening or the blind hiring is removing the names or any identifying information from our recruitments, and using supplemental questions to try and objectively identify knowledge, skills, and abilities that somebody needs to be successful to get invited to that first interview. And so other cities in the area, namely Renton, has undergone this process, and so we're kind of learning from going through it ourselves with our hiring managers, so we're hoping to report back that we're seeing some positive changes from that, so we're doing a lot of data tracking and ways to try and help that be successful. So that's one initiative that we've taken on, we have some additional initiatives we're going to be taking on in some other recruitment processes too, but this is the first one that we're kind of embarking on after we've had that training and we can move forward. So I know we covered a lot, and I think we ran into our IT partner's time, so I apologize for that, but are there any questions for us?
Question for Erin. Erin, you mentioned on the class and conversation, the efficiency studies and staffing levels, can you give us an example of efficiency studies and how that works?
Sure, so it generally starts with each individual department, a department head might say, hey, I have, I have this goal or this vision in order to develop GIS, for example, and so we would look, and we would work with neighboring jurisdictions, we generally look at a jurisdiction that has similar population that's 50% above us and 50% below us, and that is within a 50-mile radius, and we would work with those other jurisdictions to see how they are organized, and then we'd also work with the department head to say, what is the vision for this position, how many hours are you thinking that it would take, and all that kind of stuff. And so I think that we try and develop, you know, is this one FTE, is this something that we could do with non-benefited assistance, is it something we could do with new technology or software, and we try to work with the departments on that.
Questions, Councilman? Councilmember Trout Mano?
Mine is for Melissa. Melissa, you've made two statements about hiring for police officers and getting them through quickly, what is quickly?
So quickly for police isn't really very quick, so there's a lot of steps that come with that, and they go through, they undergo physical testing, they undergo a psychological exam, they go through a full background, they go through a polygraph, so I think a quick, if I were to say, like, someone got through really fast, if they were entry-level, I would say six to eight weeks. So that's just before we can offer them a letter, and then, you know, it depends on the academy dates and things like that, so by the time we get them into the field, it's could be close to a year, depending on, you know, the whole process, and how quickly they get back to us, how quickly references get back to us, so there's a lot of factors that go into police hiring.
Okay, yeah, because I, at AWSC, we had a workshop where they were talking about that, and how they would like to get the hires to get through quickly as well, but they go, we're not going to do it too quickly, because we don't want them out in the streets and not be the right fit, you know, afterwards, they're in there, so when you said that, it brought that to mind again, what is quickly, so thank you.
We don't want to jeopardize our process either, so we don't just rush people through, we really are very diligent in the different screening processes and the different hurdles they jump through, so if they make it that far, we're really confident in their ability to hit the academy and become part of Team APD.
And the reality, and Melissa spoke on this, but Puget Sound Region, we're all competing for the same candidate pool, and so I think Auburn is pretty unique in that Terry is dedicated almost full-time to civil service hiring, and we don't want the city of Kent or the city of Meadowway to poach potential candidates, because we want them to come to Auburn and serve on our streets and do the best for our citizens.
Well, and one of the things that we've been partnering with Chief O'Neill is discussing, streamlining the process to try and cut out any waste in that, and so if there's a way, because we all get the same list from public safety testing, most cities contract with them to do the written exam, and so if there's any way that we can get that list, and we can immediately do some quicker pre-screening interviews, outside of like a traditional oral board, hour-long interview, that we can hopefully create those relationships with them quickly, where they feel bought into Auburn and almost obligated, or that they have a relationship with Auburn, so we're talking about a lot of things of trying to think outside the box of how we create those relationships quickly. The hiring seminar, the in-person hiring seminars that we're doing is kind of one of those out-of-the-box things, where we're really trying to create those relationships and the pipelines, so we're trying to be smarter than all of our counterparts or quicker, so just being mindful of that.
Good.
Any little competitive advantage is a good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Relling?
Yes, I had a question on the equity training, the 40 hours, are you guys doing this in group settings, or is this online, or how is the training set up?
So the way it's set up, and I think what we came to in discussing it with Mayor Bacchus was, probably makes most sense to have four-hour sessions with all of you, and so we were talking about the flexibility of that, you know, evenings, or, you know, a Saturday morning, or those types of things, whatever would work, because I think the value that we all found in the in-person training was the relationships all of us as this executive management team made throughout that, and the things that we all got to learn about each other, and the differences and similarities in our background. I think creating that learning environment in person and the relationships that we built, I think, made our team stronger going through that, and I think when we use the language or terminology, that we all know what we're talking about, because we all experienced it together. So I just don't think that you could get that same value out of an online training, or having it separated out, you know, with a couple people here, half here and half there, so I know our consultant is really trying to preserve the quality of that training by keeping that in person and all of you together. But, I mean, we had some things come up where some of our directors just couldn't be available, and so, you know, missing a session or two just happened, but really trying to commit and focus on that, so, yeah.
Councilmember Sterns?
Yeah, sorry, just follow up on that, yeah, I've done some trainings, and they're incredibly effective, when you've got... Yeah, I've done some trainings and they're incredibly effective when you've got a group of people. Almost like the more, the better. I had a question on, what kind of training do we have for our employees on sexual harassment?
Yeah, so, we had an in-person training a few years ago that was citywide, that was mandatory, and then it was recorded and pushed out to those that weren't in attendance. For this spring, we have a supervisor training for harassment and diversity. We are implementing a new learning management system. And so, there will be an opportunity to send out video-based. But, we are talking about trying to think about the frequency to have that in-person harassment training citywide again. So, I know we, was it 2018 was the last time that we did that? I believe 2017.
2017. So, I think we're thinking about a three-year.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not trying to make a plug for budget season, but I'll take that too if I have it. We don't have a citywide centralized training budget right now. So, what we've really tried to do is do more with less. And we've gotten some grant money and things like that from Washington City's insurance authority to come out and do that training. What we would like to do is have a centralized training where we could pick the directors. We can pick what are those topics and the frequency that we want to have citywide training and really start more of a training and development citywide plan for hopefully 2021 if the finances allow. But, at least try and phase something in. Because, you know, Erin and our training coordinator, Alexis Regero, did a succession plan to kind of identify where we're going to have some talent gaps and some turnover and really trying to be proactive versus reactive of building a citywide comprehensive training program. So, that's one of our long-term goals that we really want to work towards. But, I think for that compliance-based training, we can get by with the videos that are going to be in our new learning management system until we really have the funding to build a more robust program for the city.
In addition to what Candice said, all of our new hire employees are required to read the sexual harassment policy. And we do do a training for new hires to incorporate a lot of our nondiscrimination, sexual harassment. It's basically first-quarter safety committee also. And we do talk about sexual harassment. I believe that that's about 90-minute training. And so, all of our employees through software called Power Document Management System, Power DMS, are required, and we track that they've all read that policy.
No, thanks, Ryan.
Councilmember Trump?
I just have a statement. It is really nice to see that you're going out to other cities to see what they're paying or, you know, how they're doing the hiring and stuff. And it's really nice to hear that you're using the Rentons, using no names, you know, to go through the applicants. Because when we went to a diversity class at the Green River College, that's when we first heard, I heard about that. And I thought, wow, what a great idea. So, thank you for taking that on and picking people that are right for the position. Thank you.
Councilmember Regero?
More of a statement than a question, but having a HR degree in organizational behavior, I can appreciate all that you do and your team. And I just want to compliment you for all the work you're doing for our city and our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a great team, so we feel really fortunate.
So do we.
In terms of recruiting, when you do the announcements, what languages are those translated into?
So, we haven't begun translations of our postings yet. We are, so the software company, our HRAS software company, is called NeoGov. And they're pretty much the leader in the industry for municipalities for all the employment-related programs, you know, performance management, learning management, applicant tracking. And so, that's definitely something that we could reach out to to see, you know, how that would work as far as if someone has, how it works from translation in their browser, like for example, or is there something that they have in the works? They're pretty on top of it and pretty progressive. So, my guess is that they probably do have a feature or something in the works, but we can definitely reach out and ask.
And to speak on, we will reach out and ask. And to speak on that a little further, we used to advertise in different newspapers, whether it was an Asian community paper or African-American or Spanish and Russian and all that kind of stuff. And we try and track where people heard about the advertisements for job announcements. And unfortunately, people weren't looking at the advertisements through the newspaper as frequently. And so, we just weren't getting necessarily the bang for the buck. And people weren't applying from those diverse communities. And so, we're trying to get more creative, whether we go through Indeed or different avenues. But, I think that we should look at different languages probably.
Yeah, our number one that we get is from Indeed or GovernmentJobs.com, which is our applicant tracking software's website. We do post with Association of Washington Cities where a lot of people go that are looking for municipal employment. And then, we have done some targeted searching through like LinkedIn or even publication with the police, American Police Beat.
Yep, and American Police Beat trying to advertise to lateral officers to get people who could be out on the street a little quicker. They still have to go through quite the process, but, so we've done that. We have reached out to different agency-specific for specific job postings that we have been using as well and tried to target as many of those niche markets as we can.
And Melissa and I are working on developing a citywide hiring seminar. So, we started with our police hiring seminars to kind of work through just that niche market of that position. But, we're going to attempt to do, we need to pick our go-live date and do it. But, we're going to attempt to do a citywide hiring seminar. So, we would have representative from each of the departments. We would advertise for a few months leading up to that and then hopefully try to target a little bit more candidate diversity that way to invite them in to come learn about the types of jobs that are at the city and career opportunities and things that they can do to market themselves to be competitive for these positions.
And the reality is that lateral police officers, I know we're talking too much. I warn you guys.
Sorry.
Lateral police officers seem attractive. The difficulty is, is that we talked about classification and compensation and collective bargaining negotiations. My goal is to recruit and retain people. I want to give them the golden handcuffs where we get them into specialty assignments and give them longevity pays and give them opportunities. And other jurisdictions do that same thing. So, for with lateral police officers, unless they're outside of the state, it's difficult to draw somebody from a neighboring jurisdiction because we're all in a similar position where we're given incentives to recruit a friend or they're given incentives to hire laterals and it's just not working. And then, the reality is, is that often a lateral police officer, if they're willing to move across country or from far distances, you know, are they coming for a significant other or are they running from something? And we have to do our due diligence in the background.
Whoops.
Sometimes it's nicer to train our people the way that we want Auburn police officers to do.
Any other questions? Well, thank you all very much. And Erin, you left David 28 seconds.
Yes, thank you. I apologize, David.
You can do it.
Do you like HR?
All right, so all my time is up, right?
Yes.
Mayor Bacchus, for the record, my name is David Travis, Director of Innovation and Technology. Today, I'm going to hopefully enlighten some fun that we do in the IT group. Sometimes, we are considered to be pretty serious individuals, but they are a great group of people that we get to work with. So, the IT group, I'm in charge of all of IT operations for the city of Auburn, including the city of Pacific and the city of Algonah. We have an interlocal agreement with those two cities to do some of the work. In the past, they haven't had the resources to hire their own IT people. But, I am pleased to say that the city of Pacific has stepped up and they are hiring their first IT person who will start on March 2nd. We're really excited for that person to kind of join their team and kind of take on their growth as they move forward in their technology endeavors. So, my team has 18 people on it. We've kind of broken the team up into three different groups. A projects group, a customer success group, and a technical services group. The one person who's right up there at the top, Melissa, I know you have all met her in her capacity when she, I will say, we loaned her out to the mayor's office to help out up there. She is back in my group now. I will say without her, my day is tough. She keeps me moving in the right direction. She does a great job of ensuring that I am successful and I owe her.
She did a great job for us, too.
She is a great addition to any team, so really proud to have her on our team. I do want to, actually, let me go back to the slide real quick. So, I know that we talked about the police and their hiring process. One of the things that we do in IT that's a little different than most IT groups, it's becoming more and more prevalent now, but as part of our hiring process, all new IT employees go through a polygraph also. At first, when I was hired on at the city, I didn't quite understand it, but it makes sense when you look at how much sensitive data we deal with on a day-to-day basis. We have access to financial systems, law enforcement systems. There are pieces within those environments that could be problematic if we were to have a rogue IT person who is not trustworthy have access to those things. So, I thought that was interesting. It's a good asset, good piece of the hiring process. So, as we go, we look at diversity hiring and those kind of things, that polygraph is definitely, it's an experience. You guys should do a team-building exercise and go get polygraph. It's a great experience.
You'd be shocked.
So, our technical services team, it consists of one manager, two network engineers, three support specialists, and two GIS professionals. This core team of eight is responsible for everything from service, the desktops, all of the things that you have problems with or anybody in the city has problems with. All of our cyber defense goes through this group. The network infrastructure is in this group. So, everything that's connected, everything from your iPads to these systems right here throughout the city and all three cities, goes through this group. This group also has our GIS team. So, we have two GIS professionals in there, Jagdeep and Dane, who their primary roles are to ensure that all of the data that we collect out in the streets, either through public works or internal data collection for boundaries and those kind of things. It's all in a system where we can use to analyze and make decisions based on that data. So, they have a pretty intricate role in all of our infrastructure from our maintenance and operations team, the software they use. If it's an emergency operation scenario, they're tracking everything inside of mobile maps, all kinds of different pieces that you would expect from that group. So, it's a great group. They do a lot of work and it's, you know, an eight-person team who are taking on a lot of, a lot of stuff within the city. So, our customer success team is something that we kind of threw together last year. We've been working on this, kind of a growing thing. When I first started here, about a little over a year ago, one of the biggest concerns that I heard from, I call it my listening tour, was there's nobody there to understand how the business units operate within the city. So, you had your typical scenario of IT would do IT stuff, the business units would do their stuff. And whenever they had a scenario or wanted something innovative, we didn't really know what they did. So, we would provide a solution, it didn't match what they wanted. So, the success team, what their job is to kind of integrate into the business units and provide that advocacy, if you will, between their operational needs and IT, kind of the bridge to say, I have technical speak, I know what they're saying, I can speak their language, and they can speak IT's language. That way, we can have more productive meetings, we can provide better solutions and become innovative that act with technologies that actually help the business units be successful. One of the other services this team offers, I know Candice talked about it, but that business process improvement. I'm a big advocate in looking at those fine details of those processes and where we can eliminate waste within each process. Because if we can eliminate waste, we're just creating more opportunities for more things to get done. My team offers that as a service within those business units. We have had some good success with that, just kind of going through those, walking through the processes, documenting them for them, building the flow charts out for them, and then finding where we can improve that. The biggest reason for some of that is so now the team, the IT group, can look at that and say, where can we throw technology in here to make it better? Without those maps, it makes it tough to determine that. So, another group that we have is the projects group. So, this group, it's got one manager, one systems analyst, one network analyst at the moment. This group is, I call them the get-it-done group because when we have projects, and I'll go through that here in a little bit, their job is to coordinate with the vendors, coordinate with all the business units, find the resources to get it done. Either those resources are internal to the IT group, internal to the business units, or even going out and finding a contractor to help us get something done. We heavily focus on this group to, like I said, get stuff done. So, they have a good autonomous reach within the group. They can kind of pull and move things and get things done as they need it, and it's been very successful. One of the pieces that they do, we kind of joke in IT right now, but they build these little mini workshops where it's like, we have two hours, we pull all the resources into a room together, and we just solve the problem. Nobody leaves until the problem's solved. And that's been very successful, whereas in the past, it's been kind of, I give you a problem, I give you a problem, everybody kind of goes in their own silos, tries to solve it, but we're not being collaborative in that. So, now we're definitely being more collaborative in those responses. So, we do have our expenses within IT. Running IT is expensive. There's a lot of pieces inside our systems to make them all run. I know it's sometimes tough to understand, you know, all the core infrastructure that goes on to make the city live and happy. The majority of our PIs for 2019, 2020 does fall, like I think most departments in that salaries and benefits section. We do have the other services charges and supplies, which is your, you know, the computer replacement process, is the software licensing. You figure, we budget a little, approximately $1.5 million a year just for the use of software within the city. So, that's the licensing cost, Microsoft licensing. Anything, any piece of application that's not free is about $1.5 million a year to the city. And every year, we look at those contracts, we try to bring them down, we try to renegotiate what we can to ensure we're getting everything we can. So, the revenue side, it's kind of interesting. So, we are a inter-funded division, which means my fellow directors, who love paying for the services of IT, they chip in every month and pay us to do the technology for their groups. So, we do have some stuff that's outside of that, but for the most part, we're supported by the inter-funds from the other groups paying into those inter-funds. On this next slide, I just wanted to kind of, I know some of the writing on this printout, I think it's hard to read. But, one of the things we wanted to do originally was, how do we determine what is successful? In IT, we do a lot of stuff. We get a lot of things coming in from a lot of different directions. And sometimes, IT people kind of dwell on, I did something wrong on this specific scenario. And maybe they got beat up a little bit on it. But, we're doing so much stuff, we're trying to just, we're trying to make them see, if you get 1,000 things in, we do one thing wrong, it's 999 things that we did right, let's focus on that. So, the performance indicators that we put together are kind of wrapped around that idea of, how do we show good performance? And these are the goals that we set ourselves and that we're trying to achieve. So, anything in red means we haven't achieved it, but we're focusing on those and coming up with better ways inside of our own internal processes to make it better. And then, the blues are all good. So, I like seeing blue. This performance indicator shows up on our big screens inside IT as part of our rotation for all of our dashboards. So, in 2019, we had around approximately 9,000 requests come into the IT group. That's everything from something's broke, I need it fixed, to, hey, I want something new. So, we break those into multiple categories and then we break them out. This one, this report right here is showing you which group has requested those things. But, before, remember I said we had the customer success team? Customer success team would be handling anything where a business unit asked for something new. We would like, we only have four computers, we would like five. They would then work with the group to make sure that five is actually what they need and not six, so those kind of things. So, they're asking for something new, that team would work on it. But, if that, if they had four computers and one computer was broke, then the technical services team would take that over and make sure that that one computer that was broke is put back. is put back into service and working as, as expected.
For the record, I did not have 411 requests on my own.
Also, Chicago.
I was, I was gonna ask, where's counsel?
We're part of the 411.
So, yeah, and like I said, those, those requests are for everything from, "Hey, I've got a problem with this." I mean, they could be minor, minor things to things that are very, very time-sensitive. So even though I said, you know, we don't, we had nine, 9,000 requests, that could be, "Hey, I have a mouse that's broke, can you replace it?" All the way to, "Hey, I'd like 500 computers replaced." So it's a, it's a big gamut of time involved in those 9,000 things. One of the other things we do, uh, fairly effectively, even though it still has, uh, work, we can always improve it, uh, we track and manage all changes that happen within the system. Um, as you can see by this pie chart, uh, most of our changes happen within the software environment, so that's either the server infrastructure, uh, let's say, or a business unit's application, one of their core applications that they use. One of the things that we do is, inside of those change requests, that are typically put in by an IT person, they have to have a rollback plan, what happens if it breaks? When we do this, how do we roll it back? What's the communication plan? Who needs to be notified of this change? And what is the change kind of outlined? So on every Thursday at 10 o'clock, the whole team, we have a standing change management meeting, the whole team is invited, so that everybody can look at the change that is requested and ensure that there's nothing that they heard or have seen or have any problem with that change that could be, um, adversely affected to the, any of the business units. So we've had a couple of scenarios, it's a, it's a great practice, it's, it's a standard practice, but it's, we have had some scenarios where we, we're ready to move forward on a change, we had one person who heard something in a random meeting, and we halted the change and took it back there. Before we started doing some of these more formal things, changes just kind of happened, and there wasn't kind of a, um, standard way of processing that. So I talked about the projects team, this is an actual, this is a, a live screenshot of our current Convon board, we use Convon boards to kind of manage the flow of the project, so we can anytime see, um, where it's at, is it in just a standby requested state, or has it moved in and are we where it's at in that process? Also, we can see quickly what the statuses of it, is it on, is it in risk of having a problem, um, is it off-track, or, um, have we put it on hold? Sometimes you'll see, we'll move things through the Convon process and then we'll put it on hold because we get more information in, or a director within one of the business units decides to hold off on that project because they're gonna move in a different direction. We manage, in 2019, I don't have the exact number, but it was around 130 projects that are not just IT projects, but projects throughout all of the business units. So this next slide is a very large number, and that M stands for millions. So the reason I put this on here and I gave a security, uh, cybersecurity, um, review in mid-last year, this number is specifically the average cost that a city or municipality pays in the event of a cybercrime. So if they get a, uh, some sort of hack into their environment, 13 million is about the average that a city will pay. The number's scary. So because we know that, we have to put a lot of things in place to help prevent or protect the city. Remember, I said the technical services team is in charge of cybersecurity? So under Michael's watch in the cyber, in the technical services team, he has to figure out ways to, uh, do the stuff that's on the left side of this, so the detect, the detection, investigation, containment, and recovery. We call that the onion. So inside of an onion, if you think about an onion, it's got multiple layers, so we have to put in multiple layers to prevent all kinds of things. And remember, with a cyber event, we have to be successful 100% of the time, and a cyber criminal only has to be successful once, and they own us. So to prevent that, there's a lot of things that we, we must do, um, to do that. And the onion, the onion philosophy, we all can kind of understand that, right? There's lots of layers. And I put this slide in here because it, it makes the most sense, right? Security through layers, and if it's done right, it's delicious. We all know that. But done wrong, you got headaches, and it'll make you cry. Cybersecurity, right now, is one of those, those major things that are going on across the country that, you know, we hear about it every day, that a, a new city or police department was hit by some sort of ransomware that has made their, um, all of their systems inoperable, and, you know, it's the stuff that keeps us up at night. So what are the types of layers that we put in, into place to kind of help us get through this? One of the, the biggest thing that we have is artificial intelligence is running within our environment. That artificial intel, intelligence right now is running autonomous, which means it, it behaves, learns, and understands everybody's behaviors on its own and reacts on its own. The reason why that's important is it can res, it can respond to a cyber event in milliseconds, whereas a human could respond to that same event maybe in two days. So we all know that most of the cyber attacks happen quickly, it's not a two-day, five-day, 15-week process, it's somebody clicked on something or did something at 9:00 at night, and by 9:02 at night, all of their systems are offline. We, since we have this, uh, cyber, uh, artificial intelligence in place, we have determined, um, a handful of times so far, that it has eliminated, um, potential threats that have come in, either through an email or through somebody clicking on something on a webpage, or just even doing what are called drive-bys. You go to a webpage, it has a bunch of advertising on it, you don't know what that advertising is, and it's trying to install stuff on your machine, and the artificial intelligence has stopped and blocked all of that. So it's, it's a great tool. The other thing we do is a process called whitelisting and blacklisting. That's the, that's where we say, a whitelist, "I'm okay with this because I know what it is, I can let it run." Blacklisting is, "I don't know where, what it is at all, but I do know what I want to run, and I decide that that's the only thing that can run." So we have systems in place that say, "Only certain applications can run on our machines," and then we have systems in place that say, "Only certain things can happen when those applications run on those machines." The biggest threat that we do have in the city and, and most municipalities or even agencies is email and web threats, that's where it's coming from. There, it's cheap for a cyber criminal to send out thousands and thousands and thousands of emails every day to try to get one person to do something, um, that they're not supposed to do, either click on it, say yes, click on it, say no, and then they're, they're owned. Another, another piece of the layer is what's called microsegmentation, that's where we say, "Only certain systems can talk to certain systems." So a computer that you're using today may only be allowed to talk to a handful of other systems on the network, or, um, within that controlled environment in a micro level. And then on the network segmentation, that's where we say that core business units can only see core business unit, uh, unit assets. That way, if something happens in public works, there, those machines can't reach out and take down something in the mayor's office, for example. And that's what we're seeing across the country is, start, we're starting to segment a lot of those systems so that you don't have the one person click on something and it took out the entire city. Another piece that we're working on right, actually right now, and the project team is actively, uh, implementing, is dual-factor authentication or multi-factor authentication. Uh, this is a big thing for the police department, anybody that touches the CJS security data coming from law enforcement. If you have a system or access to anything, or view to that data, you must have a second way to authenticate. So the system currently, when you log in, it asks you to, it will send a message to your phone and ask you to authenticate and say yes or no. So that's our second, second device for authentication. I know I'm talking fast, I went way over my time. Um, except for now, I know it kind of went over a high level of a lot of stuff, I do invite anybody who would like to come into the group and just kind of walk through and see firsthand, especially the GIS group, to see some of the data and different things that they can do in their analysis. It's pretty intriguing stuff, along with the drone program, uh, we do operate the drone program with inside that group. So if you want to go along and, uh, on some of their flights, I know last week with some of the sunshine, the, that whole group, uh, was excited because they got to fly the drones around and get some of the, some of the missions accomplished, so.
Good.
Okay. Let's move on to the other.
Yes, I have two questions. One is, how often do we cycle through computers? So organizations I've been in, it's pretty usually every three years. What is the timeframe here?
Yeah, so we, we have a kind of a mixed, it just depends on the systems, but we try to do everything within three to five years. Computers, the computers themselves are becoming pretty old. So it's like, we can usually get, you know, if you have a, a machine and it's still running, we could probably get five years out of it, but I like to see three years, only because we just want to make sure that we keep refreshing those machines. So I would say that overall within the city, three to five years is kind of our goal.
My other question really quick was, you said, you know, if there was an attack, it's like 13 million to rectify it, so how much are we spending on cybersecurity to prevent these attacks?
So we are spending money, a lot of money on cybersecurity. Um, I'll tell, man, I can get you the actual number. It's a lot of money. It's not 13 million dollars worth of money.
Of course, of course.
But you figure, um, each one of those layers comes with, you know, I said, the 1.5 million dollars of software licenses, each one of those layers come with different types of licensing, so they're in that, that, that allocation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to Jerry Rogers.
On page nine of, um, your pie chart. On the 2020 expense, there is a new addition to it, I see operating transfers out, what's that?
I'm, I'm not 100% sure, and I would have deferred that to finance, but the operating, when you look at the, the financial book, it, it's, they're taking some of the money in the last year of our budget cycle, so 2020 is this year, and they're moving that into our capital asset. That decision, I'm not 100% sure why they made that decision, it was before I started here, but I can get you the exact answer as to why they're moving, why they chose $500,000 to move into.
Because they're, they're moving into our capital.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
Ms. Rogers.
Um, do we have a municipal broadband where our service? I mean, like broadband for like, say downtown, or?
So like, uh, um, are you talking like, uh, Wi-Fi for everybody?
Um, wired.
Uh, no.
Fiber.
No. For, we have this, so the city operates on a large fiber backbone itself, so we do have private city-owned fiber throughout areas of the city, but we do not give that or outsource that to any, like, private entity for broadband.
Do we have a Wi-Fi?
We do. Yeah, so we have a pretty good reach right now of our public Wi-Fi, it's, um, access wa, uh, access Auburn, so when you look at it, it's, it's, it's broadcasting is access Auburn. And I know you had asked the question to HR about, uh, languages. One of the cool things on that access Auburn page that you have to, you effectively have to say, "Yes, I agree to the terms of the city." Um, we have recently, since our diversity training, added multiple languages to that, and it's, you know, it's, at first glance, I just wanted to kind of tell you a funny story, you know, we look at it and say, "Well, translating is easy, right? We take the English version, we run it through the translators, and now we have that language as translator." Well luckily, Michael on our team is fluent in Chinese, and he helped us understand that it's not, it's not an easy transl, it's not one-to-one translation. So, uh, right now, we have English, on that, we have English, Spanish, uh, Chinese, and Russian, and we've been working to get more and more languages in that environment, so it's, but finding the person who can help us translate is, is really the tough part.
Ms. Rogers.
Uh, one other question, uh, on page 11, on your, uh, performance indicators, what is BAS with TS and BAS only?
Which, which one? Are you talking?
The last two.
The bottom two? So those are, um, so our BSA is the, um, the customer success team, so those are the business systems analysts, and then the TS is the technical services team. So what those bottom two are saying are, how many resolutions where the BSAs needed help from the technical services team, and vice versa, the technical services team needed help from the BSA team. And then that bottom one is saying, where the, the business systems analysts, that, that core group, the success team, didn't need anybody else's help to solve the problems.
Okay.
And that, those are one of the metrics that we've been looking at to see, to make sure that we got the right education levels and right training for everybody so that we can, we can, uh, keep customer service at a full.
Okay. Customer drone angle.
No, you, you threw out there an invitation to go out whenever you're doing the drone, and why don't you let us know when you're gonna do that and then shoot us an email so we can look, as council member could look at our calendar and see if we could go.
Yeah. I will say, I will say that you can, you won't be able to fly them.
Oh.
License.
Yeah, you have to go through the licensing process to, to, to actually fly them.
Oh.
But you can watch and see how they do their, their missions and, um, look at some of the things that they're actually flying over. Um, we just recently, I think it was on Friday, flew over a, um, area that's doing, um, some growing.
I, I was golfing on a Saturday, beautiful Saturday morning, and they were out there with their drone, and that's when they did the whole shot of the golf course, and it was just, it was nice to see it, you know, but, uh, didn't get a chance to really go out there and watch them do it because I was golfing.
I remember that one, council member Bagu and I were golfing a couple of years ago, maybe?
Yeah.
Beautiful sunny day, we were up on, uh, we were approaching on number 11, which is up on a hill, if anyone plays golf in, in Auburn, and, uh, Nicky Ma said, "Can we, uh, fly the drone of you guys while you're playing?" We said, "Sure." Fortunately, we were able to hit our ball. So when we got on the drone, probably it, it actually showed us actually taking a swing and really hitting a ball rather than just ducking it. But, uh, they followed us around for three or four holes.
Yeah, the overweight guy with the skinny legs and the shorts, that was me.
Oh.
So it was quite interesting seeing that, and then we actually saw it on video.
But it's nice to see them.
Quite a deal, yep, very good.
Yeah, the GIS group, Dane and Jag Deep, they're, they're amazing individuals with the, the stuff that they do, uh, the amount of analysis that they can provide for the city is, is impressive.
Yeah, thank you. I know the, uh, cyber defense, cybersecurity is, uh, huge undertaking for, for all businesses and all cities and everything, and I know the training that we've had has really been helpful, especially looking at the email address, I know at home, I've given some personal emails, um, regarding my Amazon account, and, uh, quite interesting to see what's read, but the minute I look at the, at the sender, it's got a long, long, um, email address with some really strange things on it, and I would not have really known that before unless, uh, you know, until I had the training here, which really helps out a lot. But that training really, really is very beneficial, and we really watch what we're doing, I think, from doing that.
Yeah, and one of the things that we did, uh, in 2019 is, we added systems in place to help us kind of see who was clicking on things, if that makes sense, so that we could provide some better training and more, more one-on-one training, rather than kind of the blanket approach, you know, everybody's doing something wrong, here's all this training you need to do. Because they're sophisticated, the, the emails that come in are pretty sophisticated, they're getting harder and harder to determine, they're, they're tricking a lot of very smart people into doing, um, some things that they wouldn't normally do, like transfer $6 million to the wrong bank account. I mean, I wouldn't want to be in that scenario, so we're, we're trying our best inside the IT group to provide systems to protect you also, so that, you know, you can at least have some confidence that we tried, we tried to, to catch it before you got it, and, uh, yeah.
We really appreciate it, and your team and you are doing a great job, we really appreciate that very much, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
All right, next on our agenda, Ryan Von Drack with our Capitol Project Status Report.
Okay, for the record, I am Ryan Von Drack, the Capitol and Construction Engineering Manager with the city, and to my right, we have Seth Wickstrom, Project Engineer with the city. We are here to report on status of the city's Capitol projects, as well as give you an update or, uh, actually give you a presentation on the feature project that we are putting in the first quarter magazine article for the Auburn Magazine. So let's get into it. The Capitol Projects Group is currently working on 40 active projects totaling 62 million approximately in total dollars. 23 of those projects are currently in design and 17 are in some form of construction. This next slide is a graph that is showing you the total projects that we advertised over the course of the last few years with the, uh, against the total dollar value. So if you're looking at an individual graph like the third one in, you're seeing it says 2019, 2019, or, year 2019, we advertised 17 projects at a total value of about 22.6 million. So the last graph, or last bar graph on the end there is the projected one for this year, which which is projected to be eleven projects at around sixteen point seven million. And there's an asterisk there, because we have yet to advertise a project this year. However, we are getting very close, which is the next slide we have. The six projects you see up there are very close to going to advertise for construction bids in the next couple of months. The top one there you have is the F Street Non-Motorized Improvement Project. That project is reconstructing F Street Southeast from Fourth Street Southeast to Amway South, as well as providing some bicycle improvements along the corridor. Then we have the next two projects that are on there, which actually are bidding together as one project, Amway North Phase Two and Phase Three. And that's a pretty extensive project that covers some significant ground in Auburn Way, from Twenty-Second Street Northeast all the way to about SR eighteen, it's like Fourth Street Southeast. So a pretty significant grind and overlay project. Then we have the Fifteenth Street Northwest Dynamic Message Sign Project, that is putting one of those message signs that gives you verbal messages about what's going on in the city on Fifteenth Street, close to the SR one sixty-seven interchange. And that is going to be showing in the eastbound direction when it's all constructed. That one, once it goes into construction though, will advertise it, and it's probably going to sit for a very long time, because the pole that it needs to sit on, there is a long lead time for those type of poles, so it'll probably be just sitting, not doing anything for quite some time. And then we have the two thousand twenty arterial street preservation project, and that is grinding overlay Fifteenth Street Northwest from SR one sixty-seven to West Valley Highway. And then the two thousand twenty local street preservation project, that's reconstructing or grinding overlay some local streets, but that is also including some thermo-plastic work throughout various locations throughout the city, as well as doing some pavement reconstruction at the cemetery. So, that being said, those are the projects that we're going to see in the next couple of months. If you have any questions on any of those projects, let us know. And now we're going to get into the feature article, which Seth will get into.
Hi, I'm Seth Wixstrom, I'm a project engineer at the city, and one of the projects I'm working on is the Auburn Municipal Airport Rebuilding Councilment. It's a project that's going to start construction later this year, actually in April, it'll start. So the purpose of this project is to improve the safety for multi-engine piston aircraft by increasing takeoff and accelerated stop distance available. The pictures below are of multi-engine piston aircraft, and these are the largest and most demanding aircraft that regularly use the airport. These aircraft require the most length for what's called an accelerated stop. It's basically when aircraft gets on the runway, accelerates for takeoff, realizes engine failure, and has to come to a complete stop. The amount of distance these aircraft need to, to do that maneuver on the runway, it, it varies a lot, mainly based on weather and the specific aircraft, and if the runway is wet. But worst-case scenario, these aircraft would require maybe between thirty-five hundred and four thousand feet to do an accelerated stop. For this project, we're going to extend the runway to three thousand eight hundred forty-one feet, that's up from thirty-four hundred feet. We'd like to actually have gone a little further, but we can't due to site constraints, I'll explain that in the next slides. So, and this is just an overall picture of the airport. We're going to extend both ends of the runway, so there's actually two working areas for the project, one on the north end and one on the south end. So the first slide will be, what do we have planned for the north end? So on the north end, we're going to extend the runway two hundred feet, and reconfigure the taxiway like shown in this picture. We can't extend the runway further than shown here, because the FAA required that we have what's called a runway safety area. It's basically a two-hundred-foot clear zone at the end of the runway. So there's basically about two hundred feet of space between the end of the new runway shown here and Thirtieth Street. So if we want to extend the runway further, the FAA basically told us, we have to either pay for it out of our own pocket or reconfigure Thirtieth, and kind of both of those were out of the question. We'll also be installing underground storm detention chambers on the north end, that's the area shown in purple. On the surface, it'll be all underground from the surface, it'll just look like a field of grass and still meet runway safety area standards. But underneath, we'll install, they're like arch concrete structures, they basically look like big pipes cut in half. And they'll, they'll function as an underground storm pond. We're required to install these as part of the project because of the city's storm water management program. Basically, the new pavement from the runway has to be stored on sly and then slowly metered into the city system on Thirtieth Street. Any questions on what we're doing on the north end before we move on to the south end? So besides those improvements we're doing on the south end, on the south end, we're actually going to extend the runway two hundred forty-one feet, and we're actually extending it almost all the way to the edge of the airport property. There's that line in the field you can see on the very bottom of the slide, that's actually the fence, and that's the edge of the airport property. The reason we can, the FAA allowed this is because in the near future, we're going to be purchasing a portion of the property south of the runway that's owned by King County, and building the runway safety area on that portion of the property. I'll go over that in the next slide. We're also be installing the underground, underground storm detention chambers, this side, this time they're going to be up on the left in that purple square. Same reason for the north side, it's part of the city's requirements. And one additional thing, it's kind of hard to see, but in the purple area, there's that, it's basically darker purple up in the top right, that's an existing storm pond, so it's part of this project. We work with the FAA, and they give permission to remove that storm pond and also underground it, so it'll, that capacity will be captured in the underground detention chambers. That's desirable, because the surface pond attracts wildlife, and the wildlife is a hazard aircraft, so if we get underground, that basically eliminates a wildlife hazard at the airport. So this next slide, it's actually not technically part of the runway enhancement project. It's a separate project we're working on to be constructed a couple of years later, two thousand twenty-two specifically. So this pro-, so you can see the runway enhancement on the north, and then the property line is basically right on top of that red line, that's the end of the airport property. What's outlined in red is actually a portion of the King County Park and Ride, and we're currently in negotiations with the county right now to purchase that property. So the plan is to purchase that property and regrade the areas in red and blue, basically clear all the obstructions, demolish the pavement, and flatten it out, so it meets runway safety standards. That's basically what allows us to extend the runway further south, like near the edge of the property, as the FAA allows us to.
Seth, a quick question, so on the south end of that, where the red line runs into the King County property, is there a barrier that's going to be provided there, is it just, just a continuous area that just kind of delineates between the two?
Are you talking about at the bottom of those?
Yeah, where the red line is on the south end there, we're just above where it says King County Park and Ride, we're, we're taking over that part of the property. What, what happens there with barriers?
Yes, basically above the red line, we're going to have to demolish all this pavement, clear it to make it flat, because the runway safety area has to be a certain grade to meet FAA standards, and then install a fence basically along the red line.
Just fence it then, okay.
Exactly.
Right, thank you.
And King, and King County surplus this back in two thousand twelve, so hopefully everything goes smooth, but we're working with them now to get a purchase. So this slide shows the schedule just for the runway enhancement project, not the previous slide. Basically, all the environmental and design work is complete. We actually bid the project back in July, and the contract has already been forwarded to Peveta Brothers Construction. The project was then put in suspension, we're currently waiting for the, for better weather, and will resume construction. The current plan is April first, we'll work with the contractor, it'll be a specific date when we get closer. The total estimated project cost is a little over three point nine million. Ninety percent of that is funded with an FAA grant, and the remaining ten percent is a mixture between City of Auburn Airport funds and Washington, Washington State Department of Transportation grant. That was all I had.
That's our presentation, if you guys have any questions on the project or the CPS report itself, we...
On that slide that you were just showing that you're buying, we're looking to buy from King County, what kind of precautions are we taking, and you're saying that's going to be part of the runway?
It'll be the runway safety area, so basically, once we're done, it'll look like a grass field. It'll be cleared out and just be grass and relatively flat.
We have barriers there, just in case there was a plane that slid, skidded?
There, that's actually the purpose of the runway safety area, if, if the airplane lands too soon or overshoots the runway, that, there's a two-hundred-foot buffer there for the plane to use to stop. So there'll, there'll be a fence there, kind of like it is today, there'll, there'll just be a fence at the, at the bottom of this red line where we're purchasing the property.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
All right, well, thank you very much.
So just quickly, council, when you receive these, Ryan, please go through project by project and bring questions or ask questions. Typically, we've had a lot of these, we go through, and there's been really little questions, but these are all the projects that are occurring in different stages, and it gives us the opportunity to get a little more on top of it. So please review this carefully, and definitely put your questions together for Ryan and his team when we receive these, so.
Yeah, the one that's in your packet today is the January one that I sent you an email a few weeks ago. The February one will come out next week.
Yeah, you'll receive on a monthly basis, so. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, then our next item is the overview of the Bridges, we have Director Tate.
Good evening, council, for the record, Jeff Tate, Director of Community Development. I am going to pull up just for kind of talking reference, a visual for the help of audience as well as council. The item that we're speaking about tonight is generally referred to as the Bridges Community, and it's a community located on Lee Hill in Auburn. In your packet, the memorandum starts on page thirty-seven. And at that page, you get a visual of a vicinity map of what the Bridges Community is. So when you look at a map of Auburn, it's a kind of a unique characteristic, it's unique in Washington State even, to find that there is a, a portion of another city located within your own city. So the Bridges is part of the City of Kent. Within the memo, there's a little bit of background about how that came to be. The City of Kent annexed this area a whole bunch of years ago. And it was annexed before the City of Auburn annexed Lee Hill in two thousand eight. So prior to two thousand eight, this didn't look like a donut hole in Auburn. It just looked like a non-contiguous portion of the City of Kent. So the, the basic character of the Bridges Community is described on page thirty-eight. And this community is referred to something called a Planned Unit Development, a PUD. And a PUD is a common form of development that cities use, where you kind of step away from development regulations that are adopted in zoning codes, and you come up with something that's a little more specific to that community. So you might vary on density, or setbacks, or height standards, open space requirements, things of that nature. It's a tool that's used commonly for larger communities, because you have more ability to apply flexible standards for the developer and a community to hopefully achieve some of the outcomes that may not be achieved under normal zoning standards. So within this community, there are three hundred and eighty-six single-family residential lots. And those, if you're looking, in fact, I'll use this visual, if you're looking at an aerial photograph, you can see the, the bulk of the residential homes are located in the northern area of this community, as well as some that are located in the western portion of, of this area. There is also a, about a thirteen or fourteen-acre piece of the property located at the far southeast corner of the blue area that has yet to be developed. And under the original PUD, it was approved for a variety of different kinds of uses to be developed out in that corner. And if you're familiar with Lee Hill, that corner is where the roundabout is. You drive up there, and it's the, when you're at the roundabout, or going towards the roundabout away from downtown, it would be right at your left-hand side just before you get to it. So, an interesting scenario to have a portion of the City of Kent located within the City of Auburn. I should also point out that there are some pretty significant open space tracks within the property as well, which is a nice amenity for not only this community, but there, those areas are pretty available to the public to walk through with some trail systems that exist in there. So in early two thousand nineteen, the City of Kent and the City of Auburn started talking about a possibility of, you know, what does it look like if Auburn assumes jurisdiction over this area? And I think over the years, lots of people have just asked the general question, geez, that doesn't make sense, why shouldn't this be part of Auburn? So we started talking about, you know, what does that look like? And there's a lot of layers to that. David's analogy of the onion has a lot of applications and a lot of different types of analyses, and this, this has a lot of layers. It was also important to include in that conversation Oak Point, and Oak Point is the owner of the undeveloped portion of this property. And Oak Point has, you know, desires to do something in that corner. So we wanted to make sure that Kent, Auburn, and Oak Point were having conversations together. Doesn't mean on every, in every layer or every level, some of that is very city-to-city, some of it might be Auburn to Oak Point. But we've had a lot of conversations over the course of the last year. And part of the reason that we wanted to put it on council's agenda early in the year is to just notify city council and make sure that everybody's aware that these discussions are occurring. No formal processes started, but ultimately, city councils from Kent and city council from Auburn would have some role in some future discussions if it makes sense to move forward with an amendment to both city boundaries to pull that area into Auburn. In my memorandum, I do outline several types of details that we're talking about. And part of this is to provide a little bit of context as to what the complexity of this looks like. So you have a process question, and it's a very complex process question. Changing the city boundaries is probably the easiest part of the process. But there, along with that, the City of Auburn has to have land use regulation, which means we have to have comprehensive plan policy, comprehensive plan land use designation, zoning designation, zoning codes in place if that area were moved into Auburn. City of Kent has different types of rules and policies. So you have to look at what their rules and policies are, and are you creating a unique zoning designation and pulling a lot of that language into City of Auburn code? Or do we look at what the surrounding zoning and comprehensive plan land use designations are, and what language we have in our adopted documents, and apply that in these areas? You have to take into account, you know, the level of vesting that may exist within this area, and what kinds of standards, you know, there's already been development that's occurred, so we need to understand what that looks like too. And if, if a property owner wants to modify what the previous approval was, what does that look like? Kent had a process, we have a different process. So we need to make sure that the, the playing field is well-understood in terms of process and regulatory climate. There's also a significant chunk of open space within the proper, within this area that was dedicated to the City of that was dedicated to the City of Kent. And as indicated in the memo, open space is generally passive, but there's still things that a city needs to do to manage open space. So if there's a homeless encampment, or there's someone illegally dumped in an area, or you have invasive weeds, those are the types of things that the city would have to go in and manage and take care of on a piece of property that's either passive use. And we need to understand the condition of infrastructure. If you flipped a switch and tomorrow this area became part of Auburn, we need to understand road condition, we need to understand utilities, we need to understand inspection records for storm systems. We need to understand, I mean, it's called the Bridges, there's actually a bridge in there. It's not a grand bridge, but it's a bridge. And you need to understand the condition of that bridge and really what assets are coming into the city and the condition to make sure that, you know, it's in a state that makes sense from Auburn's point of view. We also obviously need to engage the community and figure out what that looks like. This has changed for people, their voting districts may change, their response to emergency services may have changes, their property taxes may change, their utility bills may change. So there's a whole bunch of details that we'd want to understand and be able to answer that question to the resident, any one of those residents of the 386 homes. You know, how does this affect me? So we're going through that process. And then, you know, need to figure out what does transfer of asset look like. So they, City of Kent will have lots of records for this area. Boxes of records on development approvals, building permits that had previously been processed and issued, you know, plans for different types, you know, infrastructure as built. So there's a whole collection of paper and digital stuff that we would have to make sure would get transferred over to the city so that we have all of that information. And then there'll be actually a process for transferring the infrastructure itself. So a street right now that is a City of Kent street coming over to become a City of Auburn street. And really, the last bullet point there is there's going to be small but important things that we can't leave out of the mix of details. But if you drive through there right now, the street signs in there have a graphic on there that say City of Kent Street. That's probably not something, if it becomes a City of Auburn area, that we'd want to keep City of Kent street signs up. So, you know, figuring out who's going to change that, when's that going to change, all that kind of stuff. So the map change, easy. I have probably been equally guilty of at times looking at a map and saying, gosh, that seems easy to change. Just like anything, you start rolling back the layers and there's a lot of detail associated with a change like that. So we anticipate more conversations about the Bridges in 2020 with city council. This is kind of a preview, just so that city council is aware of the discussions and aware of some of the types of things we're talking through and trying to figure out. And City of Kent additionally will continue to have some discussions with their city council as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jeff, I know that Auburn is involved in some of the services that are provided to that area now. Do you recall what those services are?
We provide sewer service. So whenever there's a house that's built in the Bridges, the applicant has to go to the City of Kent to get their building permit and they come to the City of Auburn to get their sewer permit and sewer connection. Which also means that they're getting different utility bills each month. So the City of Auburn will bill on a monthly basis for sewer and they'll bill the City of Kent, or the City of Kent will bill for water. And storm infrastructure as well is part of the City of Kent.
We provide fire services and police services to them?
Technically, so Valley Regional Fire Authority, for example, their jurisdictional boundary is consistent with Auburn, Pacific, and Algonquin. The City of Auburn Police Department likewise has a jurisdiction of the City of Auburn. It doesn't mean that, I mean, the mutual aid agreements that are in effect kick in. So I don't want to make it sound like emergency responders from other municipalities or other service providers won't respond, but the first responder is technically the City of Kent or Puget Sound Fire Authority.
Is the City of Kent amenable to change in the boundaries?
Yeah, I mean, I think that everybody's kind of in that exploratory mode. But I will say this, the City of Kent approached Auburn. So, I mean, I think that says a lot about the openness. And both Mayor Ralph and Mayor Vacas went to the Bridges last year on National Night Out together just to kind of show, you know, support and be able to answer the questions in case, you know, the questions do come up about, you know, there's confusion in that community. I mean, they all know, they all know where they're at, but they don't always know which city they're in.
And they have an Auburn address.
They have an Auburn address, an Auburn zip code. But they vote for Kent City Council members. So that's why I say that voting impact could occur, obviously, if they came into Auburn. There's a lot of issues related to this.
Other questions? As the former president of the Homeowner Association directly across from that vintage hills, we were deeply involved in a lot of the initial planning or master planning, if you will, for some of those pads that are out there in the undeveloped areas. And, you know, it was of great concern to our community and the people living in there that really, what kind of facilities they were going to put in there. We opted to keep the assisted living facility because some of us may need it one of these days. Yours truly included. So we were deeply involved in that and I think that the surrounding communities have also been of sincere interest in what's going to happen over there. So we've looked forward to having these discussions like this and what's going to happen later this year, perhaps, to see it come to fruition, so, thank you.
I do want to say that it's been a really constructive conversation with Oak Point, who would be responsible for developing that area. You referenced the assisted living facility. We think as staff in the planning area have struggled a little bit with how to see, we have a commercial center up on Lee Hill already and it struggles at times. And besides the assisted living facility, there were some authorizations for other types of commercial development there and whether it makes sense to have two commercial areas that are as proximate to each other when one is already, you know, has some struggles and, you know, and some high business turnover. So that's part of the conversation with Oak Point is what does the future look like? I mean, they do have some approvals that speak to what land use would look like today. But they've been very gracious in talking to us about what would Auburn want to be doing. So that's been a nice conversation to have with them as well.
Well, a lot of the people that live around, well, all the people that live around it are Auburnites. So they definitely would have and have had a conversation with the City of Kent as well. And we attended many of their city council meetings, their planning department meetings to vocalize our thoughts about what that area could be, could become. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Jeff. We look forward to the future outcomes of this.
Thank you.
I'll turn the meat over to Councilmember Sterns for Municipal Services' Special Focus Area Discussion Items. This is the last item on the agenda.
We have a presentation and we're going to talk about discussion about rewriting the ordinance for the city's fireworks code and possibly decriminalizing the penalties for violating our fireworks code. And it sounds like it's something that's maybe overdue and certainly something that would benefit the police department in our rank and file. So with that, I'll, our chief of police. You're up.
Technical difficulties, one second.
Okay. It's IT.
Where's David's?
It's not his department, the guys aren't here.
Give me one minute.
Sorry, we forgot to save the presentation to the E-drive.
I don't think so, I just need to find the right, it's agenda, right? And then the date. I need to get new glasses. Sounds like me. Soon, you might have to refresh it. That's mine. Yeah. Do you want me to go first? Go a little bit out of order.
All right. So I, in your packet, page 42 is the draft ordinance. I'm probably going to steal a little bit of Dan's presentation. I apologize for that, I'll be maybe a little redundant here. But as you may recall, back in the fall/winter, Dan gave a presentation about fireworks at the request of the council and talked about the current situation and gave some recommendation on changes. And one of those recommendations was, as Councilmember Sterns mentioned, to decriminalize the fireworks code. And that's what the draft ordinance you have on page 42 does. And I'm going to walk through what it specifically does. I'm going to not go line by line because I find that sometimes it's confusing and just do some summaries. But to do that, I think we first need to get a little bit of background on what the current code provides. And it mirrors the RCW. State law does regulate fireworks as well. It's partly a local regulation and partly a state regulation. Similar to the RCW, our city ordinance or statute code has three categories of regulatory areas. And the first is manufacturer possession use or detonation. So we don't have anyone that manufactures fireworks, so we can kind of skip that area. It's really the possession use or detonation. And this is really the area of the three that we're most concerned about because it's the one that leads to complaints and law enforcement responses. So regarding the possession use or detonation, the current code limits the types of fireworks. So this is our goes-up-and-blowes-up category. And those types of fireworks that are allowed are specifically provided in the code. And then there's dates of detonation, when you can go and let off your fireworks. And Dan will talk more about that. The second category is sale of fireworks. And really, the only thing that the city code pertains to, the sale of fireworks, is the date of sales. And Dan will talk about that as well. And the last one is fireworks displays. And these are your public displays, docking the big shows. I think the only one that really Auburn has is the Emerald Downs Show. But in the future, maybe the Kiwanis will want to do that. And so the code provides a permitting system, a scheme for getting a permit to do a public fireworks display. It covers storage, how high you can shoot the fireworks, how you have to clean up the fireworks, et cetera. So in that context, let me turn to the ordinance. The ordinance provides a different penalty for all three categories. So let me start with the main category and that's the manufacturer possession use and detonation of fireworks. And the old penalty, as you can see on the screen, is a misdemeanor. So max 90 days in jail and a $1,000 fine. This is the penalty that you have throughout the RCW. The ordinance, proposed ordinance, would change that to a civil penalty or an infraction. Dan will talk a little bit more of the distinction between those. Here, we have three levels, or sorry, two levels of infraction. First conviction, up to a $250 fine. You blow off fireworks again that are illegal, it's going to be up to a $500 fine. And if you do a third time, it's going to be back to the same penalty that we currently have, a misdemeanor. So a possibility of time in jail, though that's highly unlikely, and a $1,000 fine. So the new penalties apply to the same types of fireworks under the ordinance. The ordinance isn't changing the crime or the type of fireworks, just the penalties for the use of those crimes, the use of those fireworks. And the progressive penalties, one, two, and three, are based on a 365-day time span. So if you set off fireworks on July 4th and repeat that a week later, then you're going to get into second conviction. But if you wait a year, then it just starts over again. So it's not a lifetime, it's based on 365, so basically July 4th, probably to July 4th. So let's see how that would work in a hypothetical really quickly. So July 4th, Bobby sets off that giant firecrack, truly not within the possible fireworks that you can set off. So that's going to be a first violation and he or his parents are going to face a $250 fine. New Year's comes along, he sets off the same fireworks again. Now it's up to a $500 fine. The judge could impose a $100 fine, depending on the circumstances, but the judge could also set a $500 fine. The law enforcement officer is probably going to set it, write the ticket that is given to Bobby's parents for the $500 fine, but the judge can alter that. And then it's his birthday on May 9th, 2021. He sets off fireworks again because there's a ton of them. And now it's a third violation, so this is a crime. We're to the misdemeanor under the draft ordinance and his parents could face $1,000 fines and $90, 90 days in jail. And then, so the 2021 progresses and we're back to July 4th again. And so he sets off his fireworks a fourth time, but since it's been 365 days, we're back to just a $0 to $250 fine. So when he faces, when he faces that process, it's much similar to a traffic ticket that you might be familiar with. You get the ticket and served to you right by the officer and you have three options. Pay the fine, that's the easiest, of course. You can mitigate the fine. You can do this by a letter to the judge saying the circumstances of your crime and violation and the judge could lower it, or you could have a hearing in court to ask to mitigate. Or you can contest the fine. Again, you can either do it by letter or a hearing in court. Okay, turning to the second category, and that was sales. Again, we really only regulate the dates. Currently, if you sell outside those dates, it's a misdemeanor. Under the ordinance, it would be a civil penalty. Again, mirroring the legal use. You have a progressive of first, second, or a third violation with progressively higher penalties. Again, it's based on 365 days. And just to clarify, the ordinance retains the current options to close the stand down, seize the fireworks, and deny next year's permit. So on top of getting an infraction, the police could seize your fireworks and close that stand down and you'd put jeopardy, you'd put your next year's permit in jeopardy as well. And that's current code, we wouldn't be changing that in the new ordinance. And the ordinance retains the same dates of sale. So no change there. Okay, turning to the third category, and that's display. Because we permit public displays, there's two possible violations here. You can do a display with no permit and that would be, under the draft ordinance, the same penalty. Under state law, it'd be a misdemeanor. And that makes sense, that's, the penalty's kind of commiserate, I think, with the crime there. If you're shooting off giant fireworks in the air, doing a big display, that's a pretty big infraction that should be punished by a misdemeanor, arguably. The other violation, though, is getting a permit and then you're non-compliant with it. So you didn't clean up correctly, you shot the fireworks too high, you didn't deal properly with the poor weather. Again, the old penalty was a misdemeanor. The new penalty would now be that the police could revoke the permit, shut down the show, or deny the permit for the next year. So it kind of, it does mirror the sales penalties. But the permitting requirements all stay the same, just the penalty changes. And the difference there between- And the difference there between doing unpermitted and doing a display that's permitted but incorrectly, um, performed, is, it's just that the penalty, um, is meeting the crime. If you're not cleaning up properly, it seems excessive, um, to, um, impose a misdemeanor or crime on the, on the person. So the draft ordinance really puts into the policy or the concept that Dan's gonna talk about in the, in a second, the idea about between an infraction and a criminal, um, citation. So I just want to draw this out a little bit more, so that you can see what the change will actually be. In infraction, it's a monetary fine only, of course. Misdemeanor, there's a jail time, that's, of course, increasing deterrence. Um, the proof, burden of proof, and Dan will talk a little bit more about this, is preponderance of the evidence under infraction, much lower than beyond a reasonable doubt if it were the crime that it currently is. You have just, um, uh, you real, um, sorry, that's, oh, you rarely have one more than hearing to, um, to determine, um, uh, the infraction. You just have one hearing where, in the misdemeanor land, you'd have a full criminal trial, witnesses, uh, juries. Um, there's no opportunity for defense counsel, assigned defense counsel, under a, an infraction. Of course, you can hire your own defense counsel if you'd like, but you don't get one appointed for you, even if you are low income. That's not true under a misdemeanor, because it's a crime, you'd be assigned defense if you had, met the income levels. Uh, again, there's rarely more than one hearing. In the misdemeanor, you might have multiple hearings, usually there's three or four hearings. Of course, under infraction, you either go just have a mitigation, or you go contest, it's a, a, a more simple, um, um, streamlined process. And minimal prosecution resources are used in infraction. Our office doesn't show up for the infraction hearings, um, so a prosecutor doesn't need to attend. In the misdemeanor, you would have a criminal record. Of course, your infractions go on your record too, um, but they don't stay on, as long. Okay, so the draft ordinance also adds a crime. So, and that, I, I think the intention here is that if we're diminishing the overall penalty from a crime to infraction, we gotta make sure we cover the really bad actors. And so, it adds the crime of reckless discharge of fireworks. And you can see it's quoted there, what that would, uh, require. You'd have to recklessly set off the fireworks such that it would cause a substantial risk of death, substantial risk of serious physical injury, or substantial, um, damage to property. This is the same as reckless endangerment in the RCW. And the penalty is a gross misdemeanor, because you have some serious consequences there. Um, and it balances the reduction in general penalties that is in the draft ordinance. And we're adding a crime, but we're also taking away one, and that is tucked in in the ordinance, in the body of the ordinance, you'll see at the end of the actual ordinance, not the exhibit, is a repeal of two point two-two-two fifty. It's quoted there, it ju, deals with parks. And, yeah, that was set as an infraction. So currently, if you set off fireworks in a parks, it's an infraction, but everywhere else, it's a misdemeanor. Dan will talk a little bit more about that. So this subsection is really unneeded for changing for, to infraction for all areas. But I will note that you'll see from that language there, that the current, um, parks regulation prohibits all fireworks. If we repeal it, the illegal fireworks, the good fireworks, would be allowed in the parks. So I think that's a policy consideration that's kind of a little bit left, untalked about, it wasn't talked about the last study session. Um, should there be some fireworks in the parks, or should we leave the ban and just make a reference to the civil infraction that we're adopting? I think that's it, and I'm open for questions?
Oh, okay. Well, so, okay. So I'll, I'll, I'll exercise that, Ben. Um, we, we've talked about the, the actual level of, of penalties, and, and, you know, it seemed like there were other jurisdictions where they're significantly lower.
Right.
A hundred dollars, and then there are others, you know, where it's like two hundred. So, is, is, are we right in the median, or?
You know, Dan's gonna talk a little bit about that, he did a survey of other cities.
Okay.
And, um, I know he has, I think, a chart on that or so. I think we're definitely coming, certainly coming closer. Many jurisdictions, I know, have decriminalized. I don't know at, to what level the monetary amount is, and Dan might have those figures for you.
And then, just as a matter of policy, so, uh, when it comes to the parks issue.
Right.
I mean, so the reality is that, that, you know, we're saying it's okay to do these things, um, or get that impression. Where, where do we want them done? That, that's sort of the policy. Where, where do we, where are we, you know, more or less encouraging people to?
Exactly.
Let the fireworks off?
Right. And I think Dan will talk a little bit about that in terms of what the, um, the, the tribe does as well, coordinating with that. Um, but I think you're right, that's the question. Do we want to have the parks open to the safe and sane fireworks, so people might not have a place in their neighborhood to do it? Should they be able to do in the parking lot of the parks? Or do we want to protect that completely?
James? My question is, after the fireworks, there's going to be litter all over the place, especially with the fireworks left over. Who's gonna clean that up?
Yeah, I think that's a good point for, um, definitely with the parks. If you're setting them off in the parks, even a sparkler creates waste.
Right.
Um, I mean, if they failed to do it in the parks, there is a litter code, and then they would, they would be opening themselves up to citation for that. There's nothing in currently, in the code, fireworks code, about the litter, um, nor in the draft ordinance, but that may be a discussion, um, we want to have. I do think that there are sections of the code, and maybe Dan will be able to speak more to this, that already deal with litter, that might be able to handle that situation.
Follow-up question, um, is, if anybody leaves anything that is not discharged, left behind, could be a safety issue?
Right, right. We don't have a penalty for that. If, certainly, I guess, the reckless, if they were using illegal fireworks, they left it behind, um, and it had the potential to cause substantial injuries, uh, it's an M-eighty bomb, they leave it behind. I think that they could be, uh, charged with, cited for reckless, uh, discharge, it was reckless discharge. And then maybe we need to, maybe we need to look at that.
Okay.
Discharge, yeah.
Yeah, um, I have two questions, and one was follow-up with his at the parks. So if we allow them to do it at the parks, and they do leave a mess, there's no way of knowing who left the mess. So, is there any way that we can have whoever wants to use the parks to get a permit and put that in our, in our RCW? Another is, um, from what I was seeing there, it looked like it was more, um, towards businesses, selling the fireworks and, and stuff like that. But how about the people that do the fireworks at home and have these huge launchers that they, they're homemade launchers? What, what type of, uh, charges are you gonna give them if you do catch them? Uh, what kind of fine will they get to have these homemade launchers? And, uh, cause I, I didn't see anything there. And, and I know up there in the Muckleshoot, where I live, they're not Native Americans who are having their, their big firework displays. And I have, right in my backyard.
Right.
Next door, they did that, and they had a huge pad and these big launchers that they made, and they were just shooting off these humongous fireworks.
Oh, correct me if I'm wrong, I'll take a shot at this. So, uh, currently, um, they could be cited, they would, that's an illegal fireworks, it's not one of the list of ones that are allowed in the code, so they could be cited with possession and discharge of illegal fireworks, and that would be a misdemeanor citation. Under the draft ordinance, that would become a citation, so the, the, the penalty that they would have for having those, just having them, they wouldn't even have to release them or discharge them, would be upwards of a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. If they, uh, set it off one day, and then July fourth, and then July fifth, then, you know, it could go up to a five hundred dollar fine. So it is addressed, the possession is addressed, um, and it, but it would decrease under this. Um, and, and the logic of that, Dan, I think we'll talk about.
Thank you, Doug.
Yep.
Evening, Mayor, members of council, sorry for the confusion, I apologize again. Um, I'm gonna go through, uh, basically some background and kind of how this affects, uh, the police department, the officers that are out there, what's been happening for the last season, and the impact, uh, and challenges that we have trying to enforce our current fireworks ordinance. Uh, as Doug pointed out, there's a difference between infractions and citations. Currently, a violation of our, uh, firework ordinance is a misdemeanor, which requires that you get a citation, and requires a mandatory court appearance. There's prosecutorial discretion, it can be amended to a civil penalty, dismissed or resolved through a bench or jury trial. The burden of proof is beyond a reasonable doubt. Uh, moving to an infraction, uh, makes it civil and results in a monetary penalty. Uh, best way to, um, explain this is it's like getting a speeding ticket for other civil infraction. Uh, the proof, the proof is the preponderance of the evidence, meaning that it's more likely than not that it occurred. Whereas with a criminal citation, it has to be proved beyond a reasonable doubt. State law dictates when fireworks can be sold and discharged in Washington State. Uh, it's typically between June twenty-eighth and July fifth. Uh, state law also says that, uh, they differentiate between dangerous fireworks and consumer fireworks. And essentially, if it goes up or blows up, it's illegal, uh, per the state, and it's illegal in the city of Auburn. Uh, consumer fireworks are the legal fireworks and are, uh, typically referred to as, uh, safe and sane fireworks. Those are, uh, fountains, spinners, smoke devices, roman candles, uh, the parachutes, wheels, shells, mortars, sparklers, stuff like that. A ban versus state law, some cities have done a complete ban of fireworks. That means, uh, that, uh, the ones that go up and blow up are illegal, and safe and sane fireworks are illegal. So your sparklers, fountains, um, smoke devices, things like that. The Auburn Immuniscible Code currently, uh, says that it is legal to manufacture, possess, or use, uh, sparklers, fountains, uh, torches, wheels, ground spinners, filter sparklers, or smoke devices. Auburn Immuniscible Code, um, makes it illegal to discharge anything that goes up or blow up, and it is punishable by a fine not exceeding one thousand dollars and/or a jail term not exceeding ninety days. Um, some of the challenges that we have are, in order to issue a citation for a fireworks violation, officers must establish probable cause. In order to do that, officers must identify facts and circumstances that a violation occurred, and a specific person is responsible for that violation. Here's a typical scenario that we respond to. Uh, officers show up to fireworks complaint, upon arriving, uh, there's a group of adults standing around fireworks. Uh, when no one claims ownership, officers are left with no other alternative except to seize the fireworks. Despite zero tolerance, officers still exercise discretion in order to avoid, uh, arresting otherwise law-abiding citizens. For example, law-abiding, uh, Boeing engineer is discharging fireworks, uh, for his kids on the Fourth of July during a barbecue. If he receives a criminal citation for unlawfully discharging fireworks, his security clearance could be in jeopardy and ultimately cost him his job. This can apply to, uh, several professions, um, who regularly have, uh, background checks completed as part of their job. Challenges the prosecution, uh, include public defender funds, uh, are used to prosecute misdemeanor crimes. Uh, most jurors view it as a minor offense and are less likely to convict. Uh, most citizens who are cited are law-abiding with no criminal history, so prosecutorial discretion results in alternatives to filing of charges. And since twenty sixteen, nineteen cases have been referred to the prosecutor's office. Eleven were dismissed or have no charging decision. Uh, five have been amended to infractions with a monetary fine attached, and three have gone to warrant status. The three that went to warrant status is because they were attached to other crimes. So typically, uh, the person was arrested for some other crime and then found to be in possession of, uh, illegal fireworks. Uh, here's a, a summary of what the other Valley Cities are doing. Uh, Federal Way, on the Fourth of July, uh, puts out firework enforcement teams that consist of a commander, a lieutenant, and ten officers. Uh, their fireworks, uh, enforcement teams issued nineteen charges and seven warnings between June thirtieth and July sixth this year. Firework violations in Federal Way are civil infractions. Between June thirtieth and July sixth, they had a hundred and eighty calls. And from eleven o'clock on July fourth to eight o'clock on July fifth, they had a hundred and twenty-six calls. They also have zero tolerance, and officers are expected, expected to issue civil infractions. City of Renton also issues civil infractions with fines ranging between a hundred and five hundred dollars. Uh, their violations are enforced by the fire department, not the police department. Between June thirtieth and July sixth, they had a hundred and ninety-eight firework-related calls. And between eleven o'clock on July fourth and eight o'clock on July fifth, they had a hundred and twenty-eight calls. They also have a zero tolerance and complete ban on fireworks. City of Kent had a complete ban on all fireworks for the second straight year. Their penalty is a civil infraction of two hundred and fifty dollars. They had four two officer cars for fireworks emphasis on the Fourth of July, two sergeants and one commander working it. Uh, between July first and July sixth, they had two hundred and sixty-six firework-related calls. They seized thirty-one pounds of fireworks, gave four warnings, and issued sixteen infractions. City of Auburn, um, has state-approved fireworks that are legal on July fourth. If it goes up or blows up, it is illegal. Our penalty is a criminal citation. We had one sergeant and six officers at the stands this year, and two sergeants and fourteen officers assigned to fireworks emphasis on the Fourth of July. The result was six arrests. Uh, this is a breakdown of its surrounding cities, as to who has a ban, whether it's a citation or an infraction, and a mandatory, or the penalty. As you can see on this, uh, screen of the other Valley Cities, Auburn is the only one that has a mandatory court appearance with a citation as opposed to an infraction. Other cities in the area, um, Edgewood, Inumclaw, King County, and Pierce County have legal fireworks. Uh, Burien has a complete ban on fireworks, and it's an infraction. Uh, Bonnie Lake, uh, fireworks are legal, and in Bellevue, they have a complete ban, and the penalty is a thousand dollars there. In two thousand and seventeen, the city of Kent banned all fireworks. Uh, their calls went from two hundred and ninety-seven to a hundred and ninety-three, and then dropped again to one seventy-four. Um, you can see the city of Auburn, our calls went from one eighty-one to one fifty-four to one seventy-two. Challenges to enforcement again are identifying the specific location where firework violations, uh, come from, responding in a timely manner to catch the offender still on site, identifying the offender once we arrive, uh, an observer observing, or an officer observing the offender at the time of the violation, finding a witness who coa, who will cooperate with prosecution. And it's, uh, one of the challenges that we face is, one of the largest distributor of fireworks, uh, in western Washington are located right here within the city. Um, the city cannot control what is sold on the reservation, and regulations as to what can be sold on the reservation are based on federal standards. Some of the recommendations that we have for twenty twenty to, uh, assist with fireworks is to close the parks around nineteen hundred hours, at seven PM. Uh, this will allow officers to focus on residential areas. Um, if you recall, back in twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen, there was, uh, significant issues in city parks with a lot of fireworks being discharged there, and a lot of firework, uh, debris that needed to be collected and cleaned up. We'd like to encourage businesses to post no trespassing signs, or, uh, barricades for closing the parking lots. Uh, last year, Long Auburn Way South, those businesses, uh, as folks bought fireworks at the stands and then were heading out of the city, or once the discharge area closed, they went to, uh, business parking lots to discharge their fireworks there. Uh, we'd like to keep the discharge area open after the stands close in order to prevent the discharge of fireworks from other locations within the city. We'll want to put an emphasis on education through social media and public service announcements. Also, uh, potentially post more firework signs at the city boundaries. And then there's a reader board on Auburn Way South, uh, we're gonna use that to let patrons know when the discharge area is closed. Uh, last year in twenty nineteen, one of the problems we had, uh, was traffic started to get congested because the stands had closed. They were no longer, uh, selling fireworks, cause they were out of product, but people were still, uh, trying to drive towards the stands to buy more, uh, fireworks. Um, this year, we're also gonna use our Code Red messaging system, uh, to remind citizens of firework laws. Are there any, uh, further questions?
Yes. So Chief, how, how would we enforce the closure of the parks?
How would we enforce the closure of the parks?
Yeah, I mean, if we just, you know, barricades, or for most parks, but how would we actually police that?
Yeah, so right now, uh, most of the parks in the city have gates that get closed and locked. Uh, somebody from parks goes around and closes those gates. Um, so on the Fourth of July, we would, uh, work with parks, or either, uh, get, uh, the ability for officers to go and close those parks and send people out. You know, seven o'clock might be a little early, you know, on a July day, because it stays light out till almost ten o'clock. So, you know, maybe, uh, a more reasonable time would be eight, eight-thirty, just before it gets dark. You know, we want, uh... But, you know, we want citizens to be able to go in there and enjoy their barbecue and, you know, take full use of our parks, but they close at dusk anyway, and so we want to prevent the discharge of fireworks in there.
You know, Chief, when we talked about this earlier, you mentioned some things that I thought were pretty interesting, like, when you started, how many officers were, had to work on the 4th of July?
Yeah, so last year, we had three sergeants and twenty total officers working. We always have six officers up at the fireworks stands, working up there for safety and just crowd control. And then, we had fourteen officers that were assigned to fireworks emphasis throughout the city. And then a supervisor in the north end of the city for those emphasis teams, and then a supervisor in the south end.
Just a comment. The only thing that I see that's hard up there on Muckleshoot, people that live there say, "Well, we're on reservation, and so we can, we can do those fireworks," you know? And I tried to tell them that, no, whatever goes up is against the law, but they still say, "Well, we're on a reservation, so it's legal to do it."
Yeah, there is a, there's a lot of tribal trust land up there on the hill, and it's, it's very difficult, if not, almost impossible, to enforce firework laws up there on the hill. So the citizens in a lot of those cases are correct in saying that they are on reservation land. You know, in tribal trust land, it's legal to light off those fireworks.
Not in the streets.
Correct. Right, not in the streets, but...
They do it on the streets.
Right.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Okay. And other discussion items? New business? Now we are adjourned.